So it's 6:07, I'd like to open up the meeting. And I have a couple of just small adjustments to the agenda. I realized that when I set the agenda out, I forgot to do the updates and other business part of it. So I just wanted to do a quick update on the library roof repair, which is done. And then just a brief statement about the efficiency Vermont assessment that was done last Friday for different town buildings. Do you have anything, Chris, at all?
No.
No, you're good? Okay. So, a public comment. This is an opportunity for people in town, if they, something isn't on the agenda, but they would like to make a statement, this is an opportunity for them to do that.
I've got a question.
Okay.
In regards to the survey that I sent it out.
Yeah.
Why was it not sent to all the taxpayers?
I'm not, you know, this isn't a planning commission meeting, and I don't really, we sent it to people on the voter registration list.
And it was also a lake association, so it was beyond just test, beyond just year-round residents.
We sent out over, I think it was 735 copies.
But not all of that.
It should be all of that.
Yeah, all the taxpayers, everybody on the list.
They get all of the taxpayers that are on the voter register list.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if you're not a permanent resident here, you're not allowed to vote.
Right.
Right.
No, I'm just curious, I talked with a handful of taxpayers that never received it.
That are residents, year-round?
Yes.
Are they on the voter checklist?
Nah.
That would be the only one they would have gotten one, if they haven't voted in like five years for the town.
Yeah. One problem I ask.
You don't need them if you don't want them. It's totally up to you.
Oh, sit in the corner.
Yeah, sit in that corner and face the wall.
Okay.
Just kidding. Any... Any...
That's where I'm at.
Anything else for a public comment?
So, I'm trying to say, can you, can you tell us the, like, if you get in touch with those folks?
What's that?
If you get in touch with those folks who did not receive it and showed up?
It's, the deadline to return the survey was today.
Wait, wait, wait. But if, if you can get in touch with those folks and let them know, then this will never happen again.
Well, they, they know that, because they were curious as to why they didn't get it either.
And they're not renters, they're actual...
No, they're landowners, and they own a lot of land.
They should have received the survey.
Yeah, they're on the...
I don't know, I just know that they owe me a lot of things.
There's, we just got back, you know, that, yeah, they have some, that was the voter checklist, nevermind.
It's strange that they didn't get it.
It is.
I agree. I think we ought to. So, it wasn't because they were ignored, it's because they're not on, on one of our register lists.
We use the information that we have.
It's what we... Yeah, we can only operate off the stuff that we have from the, from the registration. So, if they get in touch with us, we'll fix it.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
All right.
All right, thanks for your help. Thank you so much.
Well, set, so the next item on the agenda is approving the bills to the town, and the select board will do that by signing them after the meeting, and then I'll drop them off at the town office. Do, I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the August 23rd, 21 select board meeting. So, okay, I'll second that. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so here's a copy to sign. There's a pen for you there. Next on the agenda is a town clerk's report.
I had a resident come in to register three dogs today.
Mm-hmm.
He said, "Yes, I know it's late, but my big concern is, is that I have my land posted, no trespassing, and that animal control person went right straight across, and he doesn't believe that is right."
Was the animal control person responding to a complaint?
That I don't know.
Okay, yeah.
So we'll have to get hold of the animal control person to get his side of the story.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Are you willing to do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we have the checklist challenge. We met on September 1st, and we came across 73 names that need to be challenged, out of a total of 749 voters on the list.
So what will be the process for that, Robyn? How, how will that challenge happen?
They all got post cards, and they got the state on there, yes they are still a resident, or no they're not. And once they, once they come back and say, "No, they're not," we'll have to go into the system and actually change them.
Okay.
So there will be no longer a Woodbury voting resident.
And then, once that change is made, do you have to notify, like, the secretary of state's office, or some...
I agree with the secretary of state's, like, what's the...
On what was it, say?
Yep.
All right.
And then, I think it was last Thursday, I had a gentleman come in from Lisero, and he's wondered if the roadside is going to be mowed up there, should it?
Lisero.
There's a, obviously, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 yes.
Okay. Yeah, I've had a couple calls about the roadside mowing, too, and I'm just telling them that the road crew is busy fixing the roads, but they'll get to it when they can. That's kind of what I've told them.
It'll be a lot this fall, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
And the record, the land recordings are still coming in steady, and I'm so far getting on the date with that.
Right, yeah.
And then the big one is, we received an email from Sam Hill, Sheriff Sam's Hill, today, and they lost their full-time patrol deadline, which means they will not be giving us the same coverage as what they had then.
Right.
And when they have staff and that's available to come out and patrol, they will come out and patrol.
I had talked to, it wasn't Sam Hill, but it was someone after one of our select board meetings where people were wondering what was happening, I think it was shortly after we signed the contract, and they mentioned that they were losing staff, which seems to be true, you know, that happened to the Harvard Police, it's happening to the state police. And, you know, I had requested, I think it was after complaints, yeah, it was after complaints about speeding around Woodbury Lake, and they said that they, the best that they could provide us was three hours of traffic control a week. So I gave them the times that we had discussed at the select board meeting to try to be there, and whether this is, and I was told then that they were short-staffed and that they were anticipating losing another deputy, and that may be what...
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds like they did.
Then you got them to go to Tennessee.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, it's just the state of policing in the state. Everybody's understaffed, so...
And that's all my knowledge.
That's it? Any, any questions for Robyn or anybody else? Maybe you're out of... Okay. So town treasurer's report.
So, for the last three weeks since our last select board meeting, payroll totaling Accounts payable, $79,304.46. We had heard electronic transfers into our checking totaling $88,192.20. Breaking it down, $85,756.20 is the ARPA money, which is our second installment from the county.
Okay, so it's our first installment from the county, and then...
First installment, right.
And then our other installment is from the NU, which stands for something, I have it written down here somewhere, but...
Other two deposits, we received $2,249, that was for the planning commission, and then $187 even, that was part of property tax adjustment. So cash receipts, and $267,565.86, which was a breakdown majority of property tax payments. We had some land recordings, marriage license, land postings, copies at cost. Delinquencies over the last three weeks, we took in $4,336.54. And also in the last three weeks, I transferred $323,000 even over into our money market from our checking.
Mm-hmm.
So I give you an updated, as far as the select board, delinquencies...
Right, that's here somewhere on the, yeah.
And I have the balance sheets, Sony Michael, your duty from, which is your last piece of your packet, there is item number 17 now, which is the ARPA money that has been...
Which I saw.
So have you any motion for the school as far as the rest of that?
No, I'm gonna, I gotta get ahold of the principal, and I think before we give them any of that money, we need to work out an agreement with the district school board. So I'll, I'll be initiating that.
Okay.
We'll have a written agreement, that's signed by both parties, and, yeah, so that'll, and that'll probably take a little bit of time. Yeah.
We do have a very new principal.
Yeah.
Yes, I heard.
A very, a great principal.
She's great, yeah, she's very... But she hasn't had this in her life just yet.
Right. She's been active with the outdoor classroom group that's been meeting, in fact, she's kind of the leader of the path with that. But I will be contacting her, and then probably meeting with the, the union school board to, to work out some kind of agreement between the town, because this, this building, when it gets made, it'll be, it'll be kind of a collaboration between the school and the town, and both the school and the town will have use of it into the future, and I'll make sure that that's...
Right.
Understood. So it'll probably be part of the lease that we have with the school and the school grounds, at some point.
So that's it for me. If there's any questions, and then Jeremy, and then I found during sending out tax bills that it was a glitch and a miss in one of the town properties.
Right, yeah, so that's...
Go into that one next.
Yeah, so that's tagged on, I tagged that on to the town treasurer's report, it's, and it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the listers, I don't know where, I don't know who they taxed for the old store property, the old store that's no longer here, that's now town property, but somehow it was an oversight, and...
The town, it's still to the town voter.
Okay, so basically, yeah, so, so it was a mistake in the, in the tax, you know, tax statements, and we talked about this at our last select board meeting. Usually if there's a mistake or a challenge to a tax bill, there's a process where they meet with the zoning board of abatement, and the property owner makes their case, and the abatement board hears it, and they might be doing some back-and-forth discussion, and then there's some type of decision made. And in this case, because basically the town was taxing itself on its own property, there is another process in lieu of abatement, and I'm gonna basically read, this was found out after our meeting, our last meeting, where we discussed how we were going to deal with this, and Robyn and Brandy found some state statute on this, so I'm just gonna read what they, what they found and what was printed out. So it's basically a correction of a lister error. So there is another process in lieu of abatement, the towns could use to accomplish many of the same purposes as abatement. In 32 VSA, section 4261, "The listers may correct obvious errors in the grand list with the approval of the select board before December 31st of each year. Many situations that look like they might have abatement as their remedy, such as double entries, double or overpayments, and payments on property belonging to another, can be resolved by a visit from the listers to the select board," and we have one lister here with us.
We're outside.
"So long as the listers agree that these are obvious errors, the board of abatement ought to be used for contested abatement issues where the listers object to the claim of the taxpayer." So the town isn't objecting about this at all, it's just, it was just an oversight, and I think if we hear from Bob that it was a mistake by the listers, the select board has the authority, according to the state statute that I just read, to grant the abatement to ourselves. So...
Yeah, if you guys just do one, and that's, that'll be off the...
It won't happen again.
It won't happen again.
Right. So it's my understanding from this that if we have a motion to abate the tax, is it an assessment? What, what's the proper term for what? The tax bill or tax assessment for...
For that parcel, it will be abated. I will have to do a general entry, so it will come out of the actual, our account of abatements.
Okay.
So that money from the town will go back to clear, to, to the legislature.
So if the motion stated that the select board grants the town abatement on the old school, the old store property, that would, for the amount of...
The tax bill's rate amount.
Yeah, we just tag it. Okay, it's here somewhere. $237, $290.13.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, listers are off the hook.
We're on board.
Okay. We're done with that. All right, no worries.
No problem.
I've never made any mistakes in my life, so no worries.
So, next on our agenda is, let's deal with the auditor appointment for fiscal year
21, and I want to give just some background on this. At our last select board meeting, usually the town has three auditors, and they're usually elected at town meeting day. This particular town meeting day, which we didn't have in person, it was an Australian ballot, there were no people on the Australian ballot for people to vote for an auditor. So after town meeting, there was a town resident who stepped forward to volunteer to be an auditor, and the select board appointed that person. However, that's only one auditor out of required three, so it's like the select board members, we had to wait until there was another select board member here tonight, because with only one, we can't really have a meeting, we have to have forums, so that means at least two. So we, and since our meeting two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, there has been another, a former auditor, Jane Noel-Lorindow, who has stepped forward to serve as a town auditor till the end of the year, till town meeting day, basically, which will solve the town's problem for having auditors to review the fiscal year 21 books. So that's one thing that I would like to have us discuss, and possibly appoint Jane as our second auditor, so that we can proceed with the audit of the fiscal year 21, but I would still like us to discuss the alternative that we had talked about, and this is what was presented to us from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, one of the sort of quasi-governmental entities that we use for advice, is that many towns are having, have had similar problems of finding people in town to serve as auditors, and they have chosen to go and use a professional auditing firm. So they basically hire out the audit, and that could be something that Woodbury could do, that's what we were gonna do, we were gonna put out an RFP for an auditor to, to do this fiscal year, and we would have been pretty lucky to find somebody in time to have it done by the end of the calendar year. But, one thing, the only, if a town wants to make that switch from electing auditors to hiring a professional company to do the audit, that has to be decided by the town residents at town meeting. So I am thinking, we can discuss it more, that this is probably a good agenda item for town meeting this March, whether or not the town wants to do that. And I think it would behoove us to send out the, we, we had an RFP already to send out, we'll kind of put it on hold when this other situation became a possibility, but I think it would be good for us to put the auditor RFP out, just to get a sense of what it's gonna cost the town.
And my, my opinion has a change, we voted to do it, I think we should still send it out, even if it doesn't get done till...
We, yeah, we did, we did.
Yes, I agree.
Yes, we agreed, we agreed to do it. To do it, so...
Even if we get auditors, they can finish this year, but we'll do it, whatever the, as soon as they can get it done.
But our, our initial vote, and this has been three weeks now...
Yes.
Was that we should move forward with a professional auditor.
Yeah.
Brandy, do you agree with that?
Yes.
A professional auditor would be useful, yes?
I, yes, it would be beneficial if we cannot find town members that will not audit.
Right.
Right, well, there's a couple things going on, I know talking to some former auditors, that's been a...
A sore handle.
One of the things they've said that needed doing in the past is having a, a real audit done outside of the town residents, regardless of this year, next year.
We, we had put out an audit, maybe, was it three years ago, maybe four?
Yes.
And we were, we had it written into the next fiscal year budget, and then there were some, you know, items that came on, came up, that we hadn't planned on, that really kind of pushed up the budget more than we wanted to, so we dropped that, I'm just so that the...
But the article also got voted down, wasn't it?
No, it was never, it never came before.
Yeah, just a budget line item. There's just two kinds of things going on, it would take a town vote to change the process to where it's done by an outside firm, I think in that case you still have auditors, but they kind of just oversee.
They oversee, yeah.
They aren't actually doing it, they just kind of watch what the other auditors doing. So that's a kind of separate discussion thing, which we have time to do in the next couple months.
So if we, if we were to use the town auditors for this fiscal year, because we haven't budgeted more, and this, you know, it's not gonna be, it'll be $10,000, $15,000 that we'll, town will be paying for a professional auditor. So if we, if we have a sense of what, by putting out the RFP, what that was gonna cost the town, then we can budget it...
Right. So I think we should send it out, and then...
And see what we get.
Yeah.
So just changing wording on the RFP, that it doesn't need to be rushed, and doesn't need to be done for this calendar year?
That's fine, yeah. Which we probably would have had a hard time getting done.
We would have had a hard time, yeah, I think.
We were their backs against the wall, but now it looks like we can...
Yeah, now we have, now we have a breathing, some breathing space to get this right.
So I'll make the motion that we get Jane on as the auditor...
Okay.
Till town meeting day.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And then we will send out there...
Send out there, without ever pressing the words, doing.
Okay, so let's check those two off. Any other questions for Brandy, or any other comments on anything in the town treasurer's report? Okay, so...
Thank you, Brandon.
Let's move on to the town highway report.
Well, so, we've been working on Cattero, changed eight culverts, and done most of the ditching. Last two, last four days, we've gravelled from Danny Dirkies over through to the cemetery, and it's all homed up, waiting for clorox tomorrow, and we've got a lot of clorox coming in the spread, you've got the trailer, and we're rolling in a lot of gravel, and that part should be done, and we're working back towards Cory. Hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have it all done.
So how, how far will the resurfacing go? Will it go to the new Cory Road, are you gonna go down the hill some, or...
Going from the belt, the Cory Road, the old Cory Road...
Yeah.
All the way to the cemetery, or, pretty near to the town, you know, the cemetery is on.
Yeah, yeah, by, what's the name of the guy that he's from?
We talked, Brandy and I discussed it, and started that swamp, that flat out through there, it's kind of swampy, and needed to be resurfaced, so I prebanded the gravel enough to sell it again through there, so we did.
Great.
And North Road has been regravelled out to, beginning with Class 3 road.
Okay, yeah.
So that's, when we get done this year, that should take care of Cattero for a number of years.
Great. Chuck, do you know why that's a Class 3 road down to the turnaround for the trucks? There isn't a house along it at all, I don't understand why that's Class 3.
I don't either, never know, never knew why.
Yeah, okay. Oh, well.
Yeah, I don't know why it was, it always has been.
Yeah, yeah, it always has been, you're right.
Yeah.
No, but...
But no idea why.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Then, on the North Road out there, remember, I told, we talked a lot ago about having problems out there with the road being able to take care of, I was the guy that was doing the work, I was late because she leaves a tag on, and they're looking for some gravel out there.
Yeah.
But there ain't no way you can put them in there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's so far out, it doesn't...
Well, where they want it is not all that far from where the stop sign is.
Yeah.
It's only down in there, probably 150 acres.
Okay.
And it's a couple, well, it's, they're having a lot of, for a while, I'm telling you.
Yeah, it's a wet spot right there.
Yeah, and if that, if they were filling it, they could get through pretty good.
Yeah.
But, he called, and as a matter of fact, I called just before I came over here, that's why I was late, and I told him I'd talk to you tonight, as far as I know, our class one was, it was done this year, but I don't think it'd be...
Let's see, I don't know if it is or not, I thought we were...
I don't think we've really used any, to be honest with you.
Well, we put two loads of them in these long.
Okay, but that would, the budget was, I think it's about $3,000 that we budgeted.
Probably put it under gravel instead of Class 4.
There's a section called Class 4 roads, somewhere, in the highway budget.
It's a slightly more interesting than that.
We still have money for that.
Really?
Yeah, we do. The latest budget right now for Class 4, we're still at...
So it made me that he's put it under gravel instead of a Class 4, so I'm gonna have to do a general entry, I'll check with the rights, if he coded it wrong, that North Road should have been under Class 4 instead of underneath.
Because right now it's at 2,310, 2,312.
It sounds like some did go up, and a couple loads of gravel would be probably about, well, wouldn't it be $700 though?
Just could eat up that budget pretty quick.
Yeah, it doesn't take much for it to...
It doesn't take much for that to get eaten up.
We don't budget that much for Class 4.
So there is a big, well, here's money, I don't know what page it is.
Okay.
Stable kind of, here. So there's money, right there.
Right.
But if it was, if it was kind of wrong, then if it started, there could be no money.
Well...
So if you put it under gravel instead of underneath the Class 4?
Well, I said, I don't know how to edit it, I'm sure it's not a lot of...
Yeah, okay, I got gravel.
I'll go through the gravel statements.
But it sounds like the problem, you can't go under our trucks down there.
Yeah, actually, nothing has been taken out of the Class 4s.
You can't want a 10-wheeler down there.
Those, those last year. So, is it because you can't get the trucks down there?
We can't want a 10-wheeler.
Not a 10-wheeler.
Okay, so you could use the low pro?
Yeah, I think probably could.
Yeah. I mean, I would say the... Yeah. I mean, I would say the camp owners that are requested it are taxpayers. And if we have the, it looks like we still have money in the budget. If there was a mistake in how the gravel was registered for another class four road, was there another class four road that we provided gravel to?
Well, the North Road.
North Road.
Well, so none of that has come out of the... That's a class three road.
For the campers, we put two loads there.
Yeah, earlier this year, I remember you did that.
Okay, so two loads of gravel, how much would that come to roughly?
Well, it's fourteen dollars the yard, and you own fourteen loads, so it's
Yeah.
Two hundred and, it was cracking.
So about five hundred dollars then?
Yeah, at least, yeah.
So there's...
Probably closer to that.
Yeah, okay, so there's still twenty-four hundred dollars in the class four road budget for this year. And we could, probably should get Greg to reevaluate.
I'll go through and see if there's any...
Brandy, I didn't see that. My feeling, and I, actually, I should probably, oh, I don't use that road to get to my camp on Nichols Pond. I don't use any road to get to my camp.
It's water.
I have to walk.
Oh.
Which is just the way I like it, actually. But anyway, you know, they are taxpayers. I think that we should, if we can get some gravel there and try to fix that spot.
Well, we can do that, but you can't spread down there, so you're gonna have to dump it bottom, you're gonna have to have something down there to level it off.
Okay. I wonder if Mr...
And it won't be in the grid?
Yeah, I wonder if Mr. Fraser, like we do on the North Road where we provide the gravel, if we were to provide the gravel, I wonder if he would have the means to spread it?
No idea.
Yeah.
Is that the one they call Moose?
I don't know, I've never heard him call that nickname, but... He's the one that's been talking to you about that.
He's been talking to me, ain't nobody talking to me about getting gravel out of there.
Oh, well, that was, he's going, you said, did he talk to you today?
Yeah, but I won't, would you say his name?
Stephen Fraser?
Yeah, maybe he was, yeah. No, he doesn't have any name, because he was pretty put out, and we were a little kind of rushed there.
Uh-huh, right. Yeah, well, he's dealing with the other landowners that are hassling him about that.
Right.
Well, it's, it's my feeling that, and I'd be happy to talk to him about this. If we don't have a way of spreading it, would the rake work?
No.
No, the rake would not work, okay?
You'd have to run in there with a loader or something, loader making in there, too much tree, yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna...
So that'd be so frustrating.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is a real pain in the butt to get all the way in there. Yeah.
I think the best we can do is tell them we can get some gravel in there.
We can provide the gravel, but they'll have to figure out how to spread it out.
Right.
And I'm happy to do that, if you want to call them back and tell them that, tell them that's what the select board...
Yeah, yeah.
As you said, okay, yeah.
I told them I'd call them tomorrow or the next day, so you know.
Because the problem is the tree canopies and all the branches, or you just...
You just can't get anything in there.
Can't lift your body.
This would seem to be...
Right.
This spot they're...
Running ahead of a local or something.
Right, this spot they're talking about is probably three miles in on the class four part of the North Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's really...
The worst end of the class four.
It's the worst end of the North part. Another hundred yards from there, and the class four road, actually...
Actually, it proves to more of a class three.
Well, actually, what's, what is, looks like the road now is not the town road. The town road has a cable across it, there's a little deer camp trailer thing. And the road runs down to the Cabot Road, which has been thrown out by cattle. It's basically a mud pit all the way through. And the actual town road was used by a logger for skidding logs, and he never did anything to repair it. So there's tree branches, I mean, the road, the actual town road, the last part of it, is totally trashed.
Right.
So, and then the other road that looks like the town road was actually, I don't know whether it was E.B. Hyde or somebody else that, that did the work to create that road. I don't know the history of that road.
I don't know either.
But that's the road everybody uses now to get in to the backside of East Palm or Nichols. All right, so I think we're okay with providing them the gravel, but we, you know, I think we could just tell them that we don't have the means to get any of our equipment that far in on that class four road to, to spread it.
Okay, and then the block we put in there needs help. To keep from cutting corner too tight, the stakes had attached to it a couple of times. In fact, I'm waiting to hear from them again. They want it more.
Okay.
Of course they do.
Yeah, so we're kind of in a dispute of who's gonna do what to keep them from cutting corners there. If it's out in there, right.
If they're trying to keep our gravel out of the road, and you try it, now they don't want you to keep it down.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lose-lose situation.
Right, they told us to do something, we did something, now it's not right.
But now, they're getting ready to pay, coming up to there.
Yeah, so the signs are out.
So we're supposed to get an apron, but they still...
We were promised an apron, yeah, so maybe they're...
So his recommendation was, either we gotta put some barrels down there, some of them orange clumpable barrels or something, or put some cones down there with stakes in them, or something. I told them that we would be more invited to them to get the block if they come up with a solution that they wanted to have in that corner to replace it. So, but I didn't want to step out on too far, so...
I agree with Chuck, because we've already made an attempt at it. And I hate for them to still be down there guessing what they want. No, no, that's not what we want. So tell them to put in what they want, it's in there right away.
It's in there right away, so I think they should be responsible.
Either that or tell us what they want, and then we can do it, but...
Yeah, we'll get them charged.
Yeah.
But we've already done something, I mean, it's frustrating.
And it worked, it's working.
It works, yeah.
Do you think with that apron that they promised to put in, that it would help with the erosion issue right on that corner where the gravel does run out on?
It'll help a lot.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
We've bent the gravel prior to rolling up the hill where the culvert is, we've bent the road slant towards the culvert or something. As much water as we can possibly give to the culvert, this is going into the culvert.
Yeah.
So, all right, and you hear any more on what they go?
I have, there was, I think I sent, forwarded the mail on to you. Allison Thomas has to, they do have to put it out, kind of like an RFP bid for it, according to the state agency that she has to deal with. So she just said to be patient and kind of go through that process. I don't know, it sounds like they're probably gonna want us to submit a bid too. But, and I'll, I'll ask her that specifically, but... So basically, she has to go through the hoops with the state requirements to have any work done on that road. And, and whether or not, you know, they're gonna want a formal or informal bid from us for what, for costs or not, I'm not sure, but I had, she didn't mention that. So, so I guess we'll just wait and see. She said she would be in touch with us.
Okay. And the other thing I was wondering about was the survey up here on the hill.
Yeah, nothing has happened with that yet. It would help, I think, if we could stake out where we want that to be. And, and I guess we should probably figure out how we want to go about selecting a survey or whether we put together...
Who was the last one we used?
Well, for the Old Quarry Road, we used, it's a woman who lives in Cabot. I can find her name, I don't have it in my memory at the moment.
Right, we just call her and have her, tell her what these things will cost, we wouldn't go lay that out.
Yeah, we could get, I mean, she, she was recommended to us to use, you know, she has all the equipment to have, put in all the information that the state requires for...
And you did a good job on the last one.
Yeah, she did a great job on the last one, so... If you could stake it out, I will call the person that did the surveying at the top of the hill here. And she could give us an estimate of how much it would cost.
Probably get it done, you gotta keep that moving.
Then next week I'll have that.
Okay, it'll, it'll be a chunk of money, it won't be cheap, I don't think, so. And again, we haven't budgeted for it, so...
But we have all the right players.
We do have, we do have some extra money that we can use.
Well, as long as you can keep the ball rolling, yeah.
Yeah, it's on my list, but it's kind of on the bottom right this moment, but I'm getting there.
Okay, and I've got one other piece of news that, I don't know if you'll want to go into executive session, or...
Well, I'm aware of the news, and I think maybe just sharing the news for tonight, and let's plan on executive session at our next meeting to discuss it a little bit more thoroughly.
We can announce it then?
Yeah, go ahead and announce, I think it's...
Oh, no, you.
Oh, well.
Spin it out.
So if I'm incorrect, then I think correct me. So I became aware last, was it Monday, Friday, last Friday?
Friday.
That Greg Adams, one of our full-time road employees, will be retiring from the Woodbury Road crew on December seventh.
Second.
Second, okay, see. So, and at this point in time, Chuck and Greg Parker have talked to Tim Neal, and he has agreed to come on to take his place. Tim will be...
Well, he agreed, I talked to the manager, and he agreed to come on as an on-call person.
As an on-call person, right.
So that we don't have to have him five days a week setting the garage to us.
Right.
If there's a snowstorm coming, we can call him, and he will be ready to go.
Yeah.
That's what he told me.
Okay, yeah, and he's been filling in as a sub different times also.
He worked last Friday, he worked today, and he's gonna work tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, so...
I guess we should have a, because we gotta know if he's filed his paperwork and all that.
Right, we don't have, yeah, so that's gonna be something.
Yes, we'll plan that for next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll have an executive session to talk about this.
Okay, and one other thing, and I think it's the last thing I have, is that today, we hired two gravel dump trucks.
To draw gravel.
To haul gravel on with Canna Road. And we're gonna have one gravel truck tomorrow, because we broke the spring in one of our trucks today. So we can get it, well, actually, they lost that on Cranberry, on gravel on Cranberry. So I don't know what you want to do after that, but when we get back to the Canna Road to haul gravel, it'd be nice to have trucks enough so that we get it done. I'd like to have this whole thing wrapped up in September.
Right, I think as long as, you know, for the Canna Road, we can cover the costs of the extra trucks under the grant. For other roads, we'll have to come up with whatever, whatever costs those are, so just, you know, be aware of that.
I'll take your five dollars down.
Yeah, just be aware of that, and, and, you know, use them if they're, if it's necessary, that's fine, but...
Yeah, I think you've got the judgment for that.
Yeah.
Well, the thing that's happened is, we've got the thirty-five hundred acres that we prebought.
Yeah.
And we can leave it out there, but Dana's afraid that is, people that work in the pit may end up selling it to somebody else.
Selling it twice.
Instead of us trucking it and stopping, that might put it right on the road.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's...
Well, it's no double target.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, because that...
That's the cost right there.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think your judgment is good, Chuck. You do what you gotta do, and just try to save the budgets, you know.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You know the drill.
Right.
We have been getting this extra money from the state, from the pandemic. I think it's about eighteen thousand dollars now that we've received, so there, there is a little extra money to play with.
Well, we won't be crazy, I mean, I don't know.
Right, but he just doesn't have enough vehicles to get the gravel.
I know, I understand that, yeah, yeah.
Season's getting short.
We're running out of time here.
Because we don't get it in, so...
About seven weeks from now, things could be quite different.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to put lady ground down, have a lot of that coming in.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
So, all right, but I will pay attention.
Okay, well, we, and we do have some extra money, so it's not a, it's not a...
Okay, I guess that's all I got.
Drone and put on the road.
Yeah, that's it?
That's it.
Any questions for Chuck at all?
No, seems like it's going to be...
Okay. Okay, so next on the agenda is a library trustee appointment. And Stephen Murphy is, is a library trustee, he's here to...
He lassoed somebody.
Give us, give us the skinny on that, and so I'll give you the floor, Stephen.
Thank you, so here on behalf of the board of trustees, to recommend that the select board appoint Woodbury resident Mark Curran to serve as trustee in one of the two vacant positions on the board. And to give you some history on, on this recommendation, Mark, from two thousand five to two thousand twenty, worked at Redbud Public Library in Clear Lake, California. He worked as a library technician and assistant. In two thousand twenty, he moved to Woodbury. And he is a neighbor of Sarah, she's the acting chair of the board. And Sarah asked if he'd be interested in, in serving, so he attended our meeting on August twenty-third. And we talked to him about his experience in working at the library and his skills, and about his experience moving from California into Woodbury. And he's willing and enthusiastic to serve the community and to make some connections. So the board, the board agreed that we would recommend him, and then we formalized that at our meeting on August twenty-sixth. And it's based on his experience working in public library and his willingness and enthusiasm to serve the community and make some connections, so.
So would this appointment go until town meeting day of this year?
Yes.
Yeah, that's how they all, until there's an available election, so.
Yes.
All right.
So I'll make the motion for Mark.
Mark Curran.
Mark Curran as a library trustee.
Right, and I'll say as a library temporary trustee. Any other questions or discussion about the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Perfect, glad you found somebody.
Yeah, sure. All right, so next thing on the agenda is a digital projector possible purchase. So a little background on that. At our last select board meeting, we used a digital projector here that Skip Marcusani had acquired. It was kind of an outdated, used projector. And it worked okay for our meeting. It has not worked okay since.
So you broke it, okay.
Yeah, I think it was, probably I'm the one that broke it, I don't know, but... But anyway, we've tried to use it at a couple of the planning commission meetings. And it did work at the first hearing that we had on the town plan, but it took both skips, Skip Lindsay and Skip Walenthal, two and a half hours to get it to work.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And then we had another planning commission meeting last week, and it wouldn't work at all.
Do you have a price for a new one?
I do have a price for a new one. Both skips have recommended a particular type of projector. I looked it up on the computer, it's about six hundred dollars.
So moved.
Okay.
Easy to please with broken things.
All right, any discussion on the motion at all? I'm sure we can, I looked in the, I think in our general budget, we have a computer, which we haven't spent any money yet on.
You shouldn't be messing around things for two hours at the...
Yeah, and I think it'll be, you know, your time is already...
Yep, people's time is to...
At that price, but...
Right.
And we actually, the one that they recommended, just so that we, it's a ViewSonic M2E.
Sounds perfect.
Yes.
Right, it must be wonderful.
So, and I think it's, I mean, it definitely is a pretty handy tool, so that we can, you know, if we're looking at something, we might be able to hand out paper copies, but if we can just project it on the wall, then everybody who's at the meeting can see what we're talking about, so. And this would also be used by the library. So, you know, we'd probably keep it at the town office, but if there's an event in the community room where, because that digital projector is pretty outdated too.
It's fifteen years old.
Yeah, yeah.
Still has a crank, right?
No, basically, yeah, I mean, it's...
Light the candle and...
That's the fan keeping the wall cool and all that.
Does it come with a higher hearing case?
I don't know. I don't know.
Probably a good idea.
The one that, that we looked at initially comes in a, it's not a hard case, but it is...
It's a soft case. It's, I have one that's in a soft case, it works.
It's like a soft case that has a pad.
Yeah, it's all padded, it works good.
Okay.
But we could, we could upgrade a case without a problem. It'll cost us another hundred bucks. Maybe it's worth considering.
I'll amend my motion if that's what makes everybody happy to have that. I think it's probably a good idea. If it's going to get logged all over.
It's going to get used, yeah, logged all over.
Some of the turkey, I think.
So raise it to seven dollars.
We could get rid of the case for it.
Okay.
Which I don't think is a big deal, to do that.
So we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion at all about this? So all those in favor of purchasing a ViewSonic M2E digital projector for the town and the library?
With a hard case.
With a hard case. Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Good idea.
All right, so we'll, we'll get on that.
If you broke the last one.
Yeah, keep me away from it, I guess. Okay, so that's that. Okay, American Rescue Plan Act, which is what ARPA stands for, using that term tonight. So a brief kind of background on this. This is, the American Rescue Plan Act is, was passed sometime in the recent past and it's to, basically, it's going to pretty much every municipality in the country funds to either offset some concerns or shortcomings that different municipalities discovered during the pandemic. So there are particular things that the money is earmarked for. And there's kind of some gray areas around that that we have discussed at some select board meetings. And it's basically, the town is going to be receiving four payments, four installments. So we've received two already. So initially, we were told that we would receive about $263,000, let's call it $264,000. And then there was, the federal government was trying to disperse the money through county governments. And the state of Vermont does not have county governments. We have county courts, but not governments. So we were, for a while, we were going to lose all of that money. But our US representatives and our governor and who knows who else finally convinced the federal government that county government just doesn't happen in Vermont and maybe they could to look at doing this a little bit differently in Vermont. So, and finally, they were able to convince the federal government, US Treasury, I think, to do that. So the other, so we're, we're receiving four payments. One is under what's called the NEU, which stands for a non-entitlement unit, which is basically a term that the federal government has come up for any local government that serves less than 50,000 people. So Woodbury is, is a non-entitlement unit, in case you didn't know that. And then the other money is through the county, what's called a county payment. So we've received one payment for the NEU money and one payment for the county payments. And then next year, we will receive one payment from the NEU and one payment from the county payments. So the first payment with the NEU was $46,219.64. The first payment for the county amount is $171,512.40. And, sorry, that's the total. So the first county payment is $85,756.20. So what the town, what we need to do now as a town is meet as a group. We'll probably have a special town meeting or informational meeting. I mean, we could warn it as a special town meeting or we need to come up, town residents need to come up with what we want to spend this money on. And the, one of the, what they've listed, and there is a printout on the table there if you, if people want to follow along with this, but... So... So it, I'll just kind of go through this. That'll help me explain it without making it more confusing than... So basically, they're, they'll be looking at the municipal plan, which is another word for town plan, for future investment. And the planning commission is aware of this money and has, you know, been... There are parts of the town plan that are addressing possibilities for, for this funding. But basically, you know, so what the government, federal government is asking is to develop an initial list of project ideas from your municipal plan goals and strategies. Consider what's changed. How do these needs connect with the four ARPA eligibility buckets? Which I wish they had listed those too.
I think it's just the board.
So, yeah, so what they're kind of wanting us to think of as municipal priorities are to improve drinking, waste, or stormwater infrastructure, build out broadband, strengthen the village center and business economic resilience, improve certain outdoor spaces, and also look at further childcare goals. So these are kind of bullets that the federal government is asking the town to spend money on. And then there are other specific items that we are not allowed to spend the money on, which is not listed on the sheet.
Yeah, the bottom, match other federal funds, pensions, infrastructure, not directly related to ARPA.
Okay.
Revenue pay funds, financial reserves, or outstanding debt.
Okay, so.
Well, the other caveat of, three years from now, they're going to come and audit you and tell you if you got to pay the money back. That's the dangerous, that's the shiny bullet.
Yeah, so that, that is, what Paul said is true. They have, rather than a town coming up with what it wants to spend the money on and then having that approved by the federal government, they will approve it after the fact. So if there's something that we spend the money on and they disapprove of it, then basically they want their money back. So it's a...
Really dangerous.
It's really a kind of an asinine way to do things.
Because they've already given you money.
Right. So, but we, we do have the Central Vermont Regional Planning Commission and the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. They have been tasked by the state to provide guidance to municipalities on what to spend, you know, if, if the things that we come up with are eligible or not. And whether they'll be, to answer for whatever decisions happen after the fact, I'm not sure, probably not. But anyway, we do have some kind of...
Because their bullet points are under two.
Yeah.
You've got respond to public health emergency and the negative economic impacts, premium pay for essential workers, revenue replacement. And then we don't really have water and sewer, but I don't know about whether we'd ever get any broadband with it or not either.
Yeah.
It'd be nice, but it's not...
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so we'll be, and I guess, you know, we don't have to come up with a date tonight, but this is something that would be good to have it happen, I think, before the year ends. At least to have an initial meeting. And the, the town plan should be complete by the end of the year also.
One of the thoughts I had had is maybe forming a committee to look at this before we go to a townwide meeting because of the, it's a complicated guidance. Anyone who's ever looked at federal guidance, just reading that or getting into town meeting with people who have read this guidance is going to be not really productive. Where this committee might be, you know, charged with figuring out what the top priorities are because it's spelled out pretty clearly.
Right, and maybe...
And have them either recommend we have a public meeting or they could solicit funding ideas. And we can, because we ultimately have to make the decision, I think. And then apply, you know, we could come up with a list of priorities and then the ideas can be applied against those priorities and against the guidance, which is really complicated.
Yeah.
If you're really bored, go read it. You'll be bored and then scared to death.
You know, I like the idea of a committee. I, I do also like the idea of a public forum, but having the committee do some...
Yeah, it might be more valuable after the committee has done some...
I agree, that would be a good, a good process.
Chance has read right through this and he's really good at this stuff. And he's saying, oh boy, be careful, be very careful.
Yeah, and I know he mentioned to me that he was going to send some recommendations to a committee, but he didn't know.
Do you want me to go talk to him about that again? I just, we think that's a good idea. I was just saying we could start that role. We don't necessarily have to follow through with it yet, but...
We could kind of ask if there are people that would like to be on this committee and then perhaps they could meet with a rep from CDRPC and VOCT and they could work out...
Because then the thought would be that they could bring this, what they've come up with to us as the board and then we can apply it to the priorities that we create. You know what I'm saying? And they're going to have those priorities too. That might be a better process, which you don't have too many hundreds of people involved in it that might not have read the paper.
Yeah.
You get what I'm saying? I'm not trying to put anyone out of it, but if you're not going to read the guidance, it's not valuable to be in the process.
Well, I think, you know, I, I do like the idea of a committee. I also would, a public hearing or just a public forum, I think, would... And with, you know, with people from the Regional Planning Commission, VOCT to, you know, if somebody comes up with an idea and the committee or these two entities are aware that it doesn't really qualify, I mean, they can say so.
Sure, yeah, and I'm not opposed to that at all. I just think at the beginning of the process, you might want to just control it a little bit by having the...
No, I agree. I think, I think that would be good.
Know what they're doing.
And then there could be something that could be presented in a public forum.
So I could talk to Chance if he's got some names and maybe submit them to us. Does that work for people?
For me, sure, yeah.
And then we can just appoint this committee if we decide to do that. I'm just throwing it down as an idea because I've been hanging my head around what exactly to do with it.
And I don't think necessarily we have to appoint these people. It could be just kind of an ad hoc committee, like the folks working on the town hall.
But it kind of takes it off our plate too to have to deal with it directly.
Right.
Till they've got some...
Getting the recommendation from those people would be really useful.
Yeah, helpful to us.
Yeah.
And we can work on priorities with that committee so they know what we're looking for.
Yeah, it sounds like they have to be on it.
But they know, for me, it's just going to be important to go down through that guidance and the top priorities in the guidance, having dealt with federal stuff, those will be our top priorities because they're safe. So we aren't going to be sitting here explaining why we got to borrow a quarter million dollars to pay back because we spent it appropriately. Then we'll all be hanging on up in a tree over there and all tarred and feathered. We'll be, we'll be joining you.
Yeah, it's going to be all of us right there. Sorry, Randy, you're not going to be by yourself.
Yeah, you wouldn't be by yourself. That's just the nervous factor.
No, that, that sounds like a good way to move forward, so you'll talk to...
I'll talk to Chance, yep.
...about that.
Because he's the EM director.
And what kind of timeframe are we thinking on? I mean, we have quite a few years to spend this money.
I think it's three years.
2026 is when it has to be spent.
Oh, so we have more, okay.
Yeah, so we have a few years.
But you don't want to be too slow either because you want it to have the impact it's supposed to have.
And we want to have it, yeah, we want to actually have it.
Some of these ideas may stick out pretty easily and we can fund them quite quickly, you know what I'm saying? We even have to wait a month. We're going to do some of it this year or maybe next year.
Right, so, so what if we task the committee to meet and maybe come up with some ideas? We could, we could do a public forum for people just to submit ideas that the committee could...
Yeah, well, see, what they do is they could, they could orchestrate that for us.
Yeah.
And we kind of takes it off our plate and then we don't have to do it all. And that also gets more, what I like about is it takes the, we have to make the decision, but they're bringing that to us, so it's not like we're, we're not getting input. We could do that. We could say, well, this meets the priority. We're just going to spend it this way. But this, they can solicit input and bring it to us and that, that gives another outside party some say.
Right, yeah, I really don't want to commit to anything unless a committee or the public forum has decided. Then we'll just be rubber, I hope we're just rubber.
Yeah, that's what I hope too.
Even though it says it has to be expended by 2026, it says it has to be obligated by 2024.
Yeah, so my opinion is we should obligate it as soon as we possibly can to have the desired result.
Yeah.
Because we're still right up to our, like, dealing with response. We're still right up to our eyeballs in COVID right now here.
Right.
We're, we're dealing with COVID every single week.
Yeah.
So it's not like it's gone away. It's still a high priority item, depending on what chair you have to be sitting in.
And we could be underwater.
Or...
Sea too.
It's, it stuck its ugly head up in the last few weeks.
So, so maybe we could, when you talk to Chance, maybe task him that the committee to try to have something by close to the end of the year and either the beginning of the new year or maybe before.
What, what I think we'll do is we'll get the names, see if Chance can come up with the names. And then we can sit down with the committee and just say, this is our expectation.
And then move forward.
Yeah, and get it done.
Okay.
Because I'd like to see us deal with spending some of that money, find an appropriate way sooner than later.
Yeah.
So it's going to actually do what it designed to do.
Yeah, yeah, there's some very obvious...
There's some high energy that can hit pretty easily, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I'll talk to Chance and we'll get back and then if you know how to move forward, we'll all hear from him.
Okay. So, so funding changes, town planning, okay. So next on the agenda, any questions about what we've just discussed from anybody here? Any clarifications on this whole thing? For the town of Woodbury, it's a nice chunk of money, so...
It almost sounds like a plan rushing to level after this.
Yes, it does. That's why you want to be very careful.
That's why it's scary. But I think there's, some of the priorities are very clearly defined and I don't think they're dangerous.
Right.
So I think if those come up, that we can fund them and you're going to be safe because they're not a gas. Anything in the gray area, in my opinion, we need to stay away from.
We need to stay away from it, yeah.
Just incredible.
Like, one example is build out broadband. And in the town plan work, almost everybody in the survey that was mentioned, that's what people are looking for, especially the people that live off of Route 14 corridor. The further out you live, the poorer computer connections you have. And that became obvious for the school, for kids trying to, to connect during, when the school was totally shut down. There are people in town that are trying to start businesses in their home that, that require a computer internet connection. And people actually who are looking for homes, that's one of the things, that's like a priority. That's what they're looking for. So that's, that's kind of an obvious one and it's right there in the designated. And there's some others.
Well, the fear with that one though is the, will it actually get here? So my concern is the, the broadband people are getting a chunk of money on their own.
Right.
To what I'd need to hear to get a yes vote would be how much money is going to be spent? How many residents in Woodbury are going to get...
Yeah, access, yeah.
But what I'm afraid of is, and I'm not saying this is going to happen, my fear is they're going to just say, well, we're going to suck up 200 and some thousand dollars or whatever we give them and they can't tell you, that's dangerous. Because you could have the feds come in and then go, well, you spent it all. They made it as far as, you know, the first house in Callis, that's all they got to. Woodbury didn't get it better. Now you got to pay it back. That's my fear. I don't know that that's going to happen. That's, somehow they'd have to tell me that we're going to give 50 houses. You know what I mean? However...
So one of the thoughts I had about that is that we're now part of a municipal entity. I forget the name of it. The acronym is CUD.
Yeah, to get broadband in the...
Yeah, to get broadband. We're part of CV Fiber. We do have a representative to CV Fiber who's meeting with the boards. And I recently attended a regional planning commission meeting where a representative from that CV Fiber kind of presented. They're, they're actually working on a plan for the entire area that they serve, which is, I think it's 26 towns, maybe more. And so they're trying to put together a plan of how they're going to do this. But I thought it might be nice for them to come. We can ask you questions. They could present that plan. One of the things that they are doing for Woodbury right at this moment is that, one of the things that they need before they can really work on a plan is a pole inventory. So basically, an inventory of every electrical pole.
A lot.
And they have all, they have the information from Washington Electric, from, I think there's a little bit of Green Mountain Power somewhere in the region. The one piece that they're missing is for the town of Woodbury because Hardrick doesn't have an inventory. So they're basically funding an inventory for Hardrick Electric in the town of Woodbury to count our poles. So they'll have that complete bit of information. So that's one step that they're taking for Woodbury at this moment to, to try to get to this end goal. But I, I think it would be good, we'll get them to come.
Yeah, bring them in. Because I just don't want to hear numbers. It's, you know, 300,000 a mile and we can't even pay for one mile. That's the concern I have.
Yeah. Okay, so, talk to Chance and we'll...
Yeah, we'll work on it because I'm definitely interested in that too, just a matter of the details, so. a matter of the details, so.
Yeah. So next on our agenda is the personnel policy.
Did they review it?
They haven't reviewed it, but they finally came up with what it would cost us for them to review it. And they gave us a date that they would have it reviewed by. So, so a little background on this, we've been, we revised the personnel policy and sent it to Vermont League of Cities and Towns. They have a group of lawyers that will do a legal review of a personnel policy and other, other policies and ordinances, et cetera. For pretty, what I would call a reduced fee from what a basic lawyer's fees are. But anyway, we sent it to them back in May, and we've been kind of waiting for a response. So on September 1st, I finally got one. So they, to, the time and cost estimate for a legal review of the town's personnel policy would be $750, and it would be reviewed and back to the town by September 30th. So, and I mentioned that, you know, we can't approve this until we have a public select board meeting, which is what we're doing.
Today.
Today. So.
That's a step we got to do, so.
Yeah, it's a step we got to do. I'll make a motion to approve the review.
And I'll second it, because we can't finalize until it's been reviewed, so.
Any other questions about this? Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Boy, it only took two and a half months to get a response.
I know, I know. So at some point, Robin and Randy, I would like to sit down with you guys and go over your, your part of that, the parts of the personnel policy that may address any benefits that you get. And not to change anything, but just to kind of, so I can have that appendix complete and correct. And then I'm going to try to find the email from the HC person at VLCT about this agreement thing that she suggested that the, that the town clerk and the town treasurer sign. She, I think she did get some reasoning for why she was suggesting that. So I'll just send it to you so that you can look at that, and, and also if you had questions for her, you could contact her and talk to her about it too. So sometime in the near future, we'll try to arrange a, a sit down and go over that. Sometime soon, won't work this week, but we can figure out a day that'll work for all of us. So the town hall, oh, did we, did we vote on that?
No.
No, okay, so all those in favor of spending $750 to have a legal, legal review from the lawyers at VLCT indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, right, good. So next on the agenda is just a, an update, a series of updates, and just kind of a thinking on how to move forward on, on some renovations to the town hall here, so. So the ad hoc committee met last week, and the ad hoc committee at this point, Robin is on it, Mary Jo Llewellyn, Liz Prichet, a former Woodbury resident who has some experience in dealing with historical buildings is on it, I am a part of it, and Diana Pedusier.
I'll find you, I'm eventually having to.
And actually, you know who they suggested as the best person?
Who?
You. Sorry, Paul.
Think about it.
Just from your, from your work experience mostly, and so.
Let me take it under advisement.
We won't be meeting twice a week, probably, hopefully.
I could add it to the four meetings I have this week already.
But anyway, so we met, and was basically just trying to figure out what to, you know, how to, how to create a plan for what we would like to do to the, the town hall. There, you know, now that we're not really able to meet in the town office, because the space is too tight, we're looking at using the town hall more than we have historically. And it is a building that's on the historic register, it was built in 1842, it could use some work. It would be nice to fix this place up. And it's a long-term project, it'll probably cost some money. Hopefully we can, you know, get some grants that will help cover the costs. So, but the first thing that we need to do is figure out a plan, what we want to do and how, how we can, how we're going to do it. So we were aware, we had an electrician go up into the attic, there was something that passive wanted us to fix up there, some, something to do with the wiring, I assume. And he mentioned that there's a lot of bat guano and bird, you know, guano, we'll call it, up there. So as soon as this committee heard about that, especially Mary Jo and Liz, who both, their work is, you know, in dealing with old buildings, they said, we've got to get that out of there before we have anybody else up there, it needs to be removed. So they've been making some calls, there are people that do that as a business, I haven't seen any dollar figures yet. But that's kind of what they thought the first step should be, is to get, you know, clean up the attic. And the reason for that is the next step that, that they're suggesting is a structural assessment, and there are professional contractors that do that, and they would need to get up in there to. And they're, they're thinking that there is some grant money from the Historical Preservation Trust that would pay for a structural assessment. And that would give us a sense of what needs to be done to the building. We also had an energy assessment of this building and the town office and the town garage last Friday. I just got the report from that, it's pretty brief, but I'll send that out to everybody. It was on my computer when I got home from work today, so. So that's, you know, and that's just the, with efficiency Vermont, there's kind of two steps that they do. There's an energy assessment, which is free to the town, where somebody come, kind of comes through and looks at things and gives kind of some basic ideas for what could be done to the building, mostly for energy efficiency, whether it's heating, electricity, you know, stuff like that, so. So we've got some, yes.
Why don't you do a structural assessment before you open money into the.
Yes, we would do a structural, well, no, we need to remove the toxic waste that's up there. The bat guano apparently is pretty toxic. So before, we would ask somebody to go up there and, you know, do a structural assessment of this, the roof choice or the structure up there. According to Mary Jo and Liz, that, that stuff needs to be out of, out of the building.
They have suits. No, they don't.
They do, yeah, they do have suits, but.
I'm just thinking before you come from Washington, it's going to happen.
Well, let's see, I guess we'll see how much money it's going to cost to remove it, yeah.
I bet it'll be quite a lot.
I bet it'll be a fair amount.
And if we're going to go to the expense of removing it, it certainly needs to be sealed up so that.
So the bats can't get back in.
Right.
There used to be 100 or so bats.
That's, from the emails that I've seen, the questions from these different contractors, they're, that's one of the first things they're asking, is, is it still accessible?
Yes, it is.
By birds and bats and bats.
It is, yeah.
So, so this contractor could also seal it up if they.
Because I agree, we did resolve the.
Yeah, you've got to see what you've got for structure.
My guess is the structure's probably pretty good, but you definitely want to seal it up for you, clean it up, because it'll just be right back in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
So I think it's kind of a package deal we do, that we look at the structural assessment with it, and then we kind of figure out, yeah, how, what order, 10 degree, open, clean it, if you're not going to fix it.
Well, I think that, obviously the plan is.
To fix it.
To fix it. I mean, that's, I think, I think we need to put some money into this building. And so.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, and, but that's where, you know, is this a gray area?
This is one of those gray areas.
I don't think we, I'd love it, I'd love it if we could.
But that's probably, the window's really small for that money.
Yeah, so that, that's the.
They were really smart about it, it's like, it's wide.
And we could make an argument that we need this building now because of the pandemic for physical spacing.
And not what the money's for.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what the money's for, exactly, yeah.
Maybe we weren't trying to make that.
Well, we, and I think we probably will. And if our advisors, this is the, this is the thing, it is a gray area, and if we do that, and there's some, somebody down in Washington DC in his office decides, or her office decides, hey, you know, you, so.
It's going to be bad for us.
Yeah, right, we'll just rip the roof off and.
So I think it's part of this committee to put this package together, and we'll have to apply it to this other committee.
So that can be one thing that we'll put on our list.
It looks scary to me.
To see if we can use some of that.
The funding part of it, as far as using that.
Once we get into it, I think we'll figure. Yeah, yeah. So we'll get some, there are a couple of contractors that are anxious to get here and look up in there and give us an estimate. So we'll have some money figures, hopefully by our next meeting, we can discuss. And yeah, so that's, that's it on the agenda.
We're fat, we're good.
Any other questions about the town hall at all? Any other comments or?
Is it still the deed, but if it's used for one year, it reverts to?
Yeah, that, that's the other, that's the other thing that committee.
It just says it has to be continually used for town and public purposes, is what the deed says.
That's another thing that the committee thought the town might want to look into is actually owning the ground underneath this.
Well, we do own it, it has a deed restriction.
Yeah.
If we own this ground, it's a deed restriction.
Is it, do we own the ground or do we own the building?
No, we own the ground, it says we own it as.
No, we own the building.
Well, but, well, I read the deed, it said, as long as we keep using it, we can, we own it. If we stop using it, then it reverts back to the owner of that building.
Well, I think one thing the committee suggested is that we be clear on whether, you know, do we own the building, do we own the ground? And this condition in the deed, whoever is the person that it would revert back to, which is.
Over there.
Maybe we could get an agreement, or maybe part of the whole process is to actually.
The deed is in the town of Woodbury's name is what I'm getting at.
Before we sync.
I'm saying you don't know that.
Yeah.
Just, you could call it, but I think I got a copy, it's a deed restriction, so our name's on the deed, is what I'm trying to tell you. We own it, and we just, we can't ever do anything, if you wanted to sell it, or you want to do anything else, it reverts, that's what it says.
That's just like my deed, I can't have a dance hall.
Darn, coming soon.
So, but I think, you know, we should probably look at the deed.
Yeah, the new policy's right in the books there.
And they were, you know, the, were kind of thinking that maybe somehow the deed could be so that the town owns the building and the property outright before we sync.
So I checked on that a few years ago. What it would take is the property owner, this property owner and that property owner, you just simply write a quitclaim deed, removing it, but the other property owner would have to agree. So I don't know if that would happen or not.
Right.
Because I researched this for, that's when I looked at the deed, because we own land, our name's on it.
That would be a question that government might.
Yep.
Yeah.
Or we'll be helping money in the town, it could be some way else.
Yeah, so it would be nice to remove that condition.
It's easy to do if everybody agrees, it's one of those things.
Yeah.
Because you just simply write two new deeds, quitclaim, you're done, but.
Yeah. Okay. So maybe we should, we'll look into that.
You just have to want the, our department would have to say, okay.
Yeah.
So how should we first inform the county?
Yeah.
Agree, because I think it's been a cloud for a long, long time, 18 something.
Yeah, yeah, that's the original.
It's called the Woodbury Town Square property.
The original agreement in that deed was from the very beginning.
Because it was donated to be the Woodbury Town Square and Town Hall, as long as you use it for that.
Right.
So it's been, yeah. It's a classic deed restriction.
Yeah. So I just have a couple of quick updates, and then we can.